And that would be built to ADA requirements, right?
Uh, yes, it would. Other questions?
Uh, on page fifteen of the, of the report, um, where you make reference to McKnight Road, um, access via McKnight Road or, or Eleventh.
Yup.
You, you make a statement about McKnight Road North or Eleventh Avenue East. That's the name of the road, that's not the direction of the road, correct? McKnight Road North.
Well, what I meant to say, I'm not sure what I wrote, that you can get to the Taco Bell from either McKnight, um, right, right turn in, uh, from coming south on McKnight or on Eleventh Avenue. Either direction, right, right turn or left turn in.
Yeah.
But the, the, the access from McKnight is on the access drive back to the Target, right?
Correct. There is no actual driveway.
That's how I read the plan.
There's, there's no, no driveway up of McKnight.
Right, yeah.
No additional driveway.
Yeah.
They're utilizing the driveway that's already there, which is for Target.
Which is great.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding, that's what I thought was being said there, and I, um, question about the plan. Um, there's reference to, uh, in the conditions, in the suggested conditions, um, work in, uh, Ramsey County right of way. This, where is that encroachment, that work occurring? Is it along McKnight Road somewhere?
I believe that re-
Off, off property?
Yeah, that refers to any work that would be performed off of their site that would impact the county right of way.
It would be that connection to the Batum Minister.
It will be their action, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's what it would be. Okay. And then the other question I had is, um, who is the owner of the property to the north? Cause there's a pavement encroachment there. I assume is part of the agreement that's in place?
The encroachment agreement that I had, come, go ahead.
Yeah, just, I can answer some questions. My name's, um, Zach Selson with Marvin Development. I did want to highlight, um, in the, there was a typo on our entity, want to make sure when we get this approved tonight, it is, it is Marvin Development.
Oh, is it in there?
Five. Mm-hmm. Um, so yeah, that is a, there's, that's an existing driveway right now, that's part of a private agreement. These two lots originally were one, and, um, back in the nineties, it split into two lots when the oil, Oil Can Henrys went in. Um, so there is a shared maintenance agreement for that road. Right now, it hasn't been touched for a very long time, so our intent, we have everything in place to get that repaired for, for it to look better and cleaned up. No giant potholes when you drive in.
Right. That'll be nice, having almost lost my car in a couple of them.
I drove there today, I almost lost my Jeep, so it will be good to get a, get a new one in there.
Randy, thank you for sending the plans over to us to have Mendoc check it.
Yup, no problem, thanks for the heads up on that.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I, I don't foresee any problems, just because it's adjacent to our right of way, I want our water resources people to say, "We have no problems," so.
So that has occurred to you since I spoke to you last, that, for, or the site was within how many feet of?
Uh, well, Mendoc has a right of way that extends along, uh, McKnight for about a hundred and ninety feet, give or take a little bit, north thirty-six, and so it looked like this might have been abutting it, but even at that, you know, it's close enough to the thirty-sixth right of way that we just want to make sure that there's not going to be any problems with the water resources there. But it didn't look like there were, but you know how it is, it's always better-
Yep, absolutely.
-get somebody to sign off and say, "This is okay," than it is to come back two years later and say, "You're flooding our highway."
Yep, good, yeah. And we did, uh, uh, get, uh, approved with the watershed last night.
That's good, too.
Um, and worked closely with them as well on the project, so.
That's a big, big accomplishment.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I work on the planning side of Mendoc, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Great, thank you very much.
Please do look in.
If I had anything else, cooperating around here. Looks like a property line, but, but, there's a, there's a defined, um, line on the landscape plan that's just a sod versus seed line, so I figured that out. Additional help? It looked kind of like a property line, but it wasn't.
Got it.
Question?
Yup.
I do have a question, what is that utility easement that's kind of running kitty-wampus across the site?
What page are you on?
Uh, C five hundred is the utility easement, it says C Utility Note twenty, pointing to the line right down the middle of that easement, and that references a box culvert? Are you talking closer to McKnight Road?
Uh, this little guy right here, someone's-
Oh, that, that is what we were working with the watershed on, so that is for, um, stormwater.
Okay.
And we are, we work very closely with them. We've, I'm almost on year five on, on this site here.
Okay.
So we, um, we are, we're going to have a storm collection facility under our site as well as that storm pond you've seen that's closer to McKnight, and that will all kind of withhold our site, and it still ties into this, and we've worked with the watershed on that.
Okay.
Um, so that's just kind of a main, uh, uh, kind of a drainage storm drain under there.
There was no conflict with that PVC pipe you have coming from that?
Nope, and that's kind of why we are, um, our building is not on that, and why we have this site planned, uh, shaped this way.
Okay.
Um, yeah, cause we are still kind of tucked in a corner here, and that was just because of all of the, the difficulty working through the watershed and, and holding all that water on the site, so, yeah, we're happy we were able to make it, make it fit.
So the sanitary is above that or below that, um, ox culvert?
That I'd have to confirm.
Cause it looks like it's crossed.
Yup. I do not know the answer of that, um, I'd have to confirm with our en, our engineer, um, but I do know that we work very closely with, with city staff, engineering, and watershed to make sure that all of that was taken care of and addressed.
I have a question about, uh, from McKnight. Once you hit the, uh, is there continuation of the sidewalk that continues the ADA compliance, and also it's safe for people? When I see, I see people crossing and cutting right in front of the drive-through.
Yeah, and that's kind of why we took that sight line and tried to not, and we, we brought it where it was, set to connect and all of that asphalt in there.
Yeah.
Um, so we did have that thought, um, and that, that's kind of where we proposed, we thought this was kind of the, you know, a straight line from McKnight and, and not trying to, trying to get, you know, go in between the site, also thinking about future use next door and ma, being able to share that between future use as well.
So, people with a stroller or a wheelchair, is there access that doesn't take, safe access?
Um, we, yeah, we will have, I, the sidewalk itself will be ADA into the, the, the parking lot.
Okay, but from where it enters the parking lot, there's anywhere where they're not pulled into traffic?
Um, currently, right now, um, no, where, where it's entering in the parking lot is where, where we, where we had decided to put it, to try to keep that in between both of the future sites.
Okay.
Only the thing that could be done there is maybe a striped crosswalk, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
That might be, uh, that might be an option worth considering.
Cause this is a site where I would see a lot of foot-
Sure, we can, we, we, we're, I'm not opposed to looking at that.
Maybe create a crossing, a crossing, just a striped, painted striped crossing.
Easy, yeah.
Something like that, I think, would be in order. At least it, at least it's an alert.
Yup.
Yeah.
Pay a little bit more of attention here.
Yup, and we have a bike rack and want to encourage that use and, um-
But it is better than crossing the drive-through lane, I think.
Yeah.
That was kind of our thought of what, or where we were.
Crossing a drive-through lane is usually-
But I can, I can see people, they're walking, just taking the view and crossing.
They, they still will.
I know that, but.
Yes, they will. I'm looking at, uh, C two hundred, and that's coming from where McKnight is, is the line that you have drawn, is the line that you have drawn for the, uh, the parkway.
For the sidewalk, you mean, or?
Yeah.
Yup, yup. Yeah, trying to find an efficient path there, it is quite a long-
Yup.
-sidewalk.
So there are still some conditions, I think the conditions make sense. Um, are there any other comments, questions?
I'm wondering whether you've got on, on C two hundred, you've got what looks like a, a lighting station and an island there, I'm just wondering if maybe that island could be made part of the sidewalk, so that, cause it's kind of aimed right towards the door of the, uh, so if you were to, you know, if you were to make that part of the sidewalk, even if it was like, just striped or something like that, that would kind of help funnel people. The, the only thing I'm thinking about is just that the, the way the store is laid out, people are going to be coming out of the drive-through, uh, when, it, when pedestrians are crossing in front of them, and so they're more likely to be accelerating slightly there than it would be if the store were oriented the other way around, where they were sitting, waiting for their line of drive-through window. I'm not saying change the store around.
Yup.
Just saying, you know, that that might help make it just a touch safer for the people that are, are walking or bicycling in.
Also have to consider the fact that if somebody's walking along that path from McKnight, they aren't going to follow a striped path, unless you make it a straight line.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, is if you make a straight line across.
If you, if you made it a straight line from where it enters the parking lot to the door, that's where people will walk, whether there's a stripe somewhere else or not.
Yeah.
So it, it's one of those deals where, yeah, okay, it's a good idea, it might, might create a little bit of an alert, but, um, but people are going to walk where they want to walk.
That's a good point, though. What is your expected pedestrian access route? Once they hit the end of that sidewalk, do you expect them to walk all the way around, or do you have planning a curb cut in, in here somewhere?
Yeah, I think our thought was that we could, we, they could cut through, and we were looking at maybe doing some sort, some type of maybe, like, looking how we could get that portion to come through.
Okay.
We don't anticipate our parking stalls to be full, used at this site fully, this is a lot of parking for our use.
Okay.
Um, if you look at other, of our locations across the metro, um, you know, we, another thought we originally had too, is we could, we could try to, um, you know, see, again, looking at how future use was, that was another unknown, so we wanted the sidewalk to be able to work best for the long run, um, to kind of, you know, who knows what's going to happen here, there, you know, will, there might be some flexibility to share that as well, instead of just at, you know, getting rid of more impervious space and down the line and adding another sidewalk five years from now. We're hoping we're a little bit of a catalyst, where maybe some action happens next door, um, in a few years, um, but I'm, you know, we can look at, look, working on plans to do some striping and see, but our, our goal too is not to add more concrete, you know, and asphalt, and we just, you know, we've worked really hard on being as, as efficient as we could and working with watershed, um-
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Would it make sense, is there a way, if we were to eliminate some of the parking stalls that we may not need, and swap it out for some sort of logical path? I don't know how that would-
Yeah, if you, if we wanted to get rid of one stall and have some striping come across, we're more than happy to do that and don't anticipate it to impact our business.
Well, if you took out the, the stall, the, the two stalls on the very far right side, then that would give you a direct path from the sidewalk down to the path in front of the building.
Even divert, divert the, the trail, the, the pathway, quote, to a straighter line toward the entrance, so bend the path down, so you wouldn't even need, so it would, it would enter the parking lot where that parking stall is, bend it southward, so that if you're walking toward the building, you're, you're in a straighter line toward the entrance.
If you're, if you do look at C two hundred, um, our sidewalk, you can see a little, it's noted by the seven point three three feet on that corner of the building, the sidewalk does, uh, stick out right here, so we could have the, they go right, we also have a stop sign on either side of our drive-through, and it's not, it's not, um, it's not, I wouldn't say it's common, but it's, we've, we've had it before where people walk, no one's flooring out of a drive-through like that if they're grabbing their food.
Well, they're not making that kind of a ninety-degree turn, they won't be quick fast, so that's-
Exactly, yup.
And that wasn't, I, I wasn't saying earlier that I thought they would be, it's just that they would be moving faster.
Once you have your food, you're out there, right?
But if, yeah, if, yeah, exactly.
Sure, I feel that ninety-degree turn there, they're not, it's not like they're going to be doing forty coming out of there.
Yeah.
Yup, yeah, if we're, if we're able to, but we definitely put that there if you're okay with it.
If they find some improvement there-
Yeah.
-on the, on the pedestrian pathway, and, and it seems to me that the parking, we're talking about a proof of parking solution anyway.
Well, I, that suggests that it has adequate parking, parking-
Right.
-as is proposed, even though it doesn't necessarily meet verbatim-
Right.
-the table of the ordinance. If there is some flexibility in losing some spots to improve the pedestrian capacity for this, I think we need to state it clearly in our reservation.
Yup, yup, I think that's a very good idea.
Yeah, cause I think you're going to get a decent amount of pedestrian traffic up there, just, uh, just looking at the number of abandoned, uh, uh, target carts that you see along, uh, there's a lot of street there.
I think you'll get traffic from both directions, pedestrian traffic from both ways, so.
Between the apartments and school.
Yeah.
And, and the reason I brought it up is because I'm thinking more people with disability aids and safety.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
No, it was just, we were, we were trying to think of creative solution while retaining, um, the parking, but if it gives any comfort to, to add our, our Maplewood location, kind of our closest one to the north, um, we have twenty-five stalls there, and it's, they, we don't even come close to using all of those stalls, so even if we get rid of those two, we're sitting exactly where we are, a couple miles to the north.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so it's not, not uncommon for us at all.
So the, the one by the mall is yours?
Correct, yup.
I would, uh, still need to clarify the conditions. Um, the conditions that were part of your report, I think, are pretty straightforward. Did we just add a condition?
Yeah.
Added a, or at least a clarification?
Uh, well, I think I can wordsmith it, but basically we're allowing the elimination of two parking stalls, potentially inclusion of some striping between those two stalls to accommodate the pedestrian activity and-
Yeah. An improved pedestrian path, like that path from McKnight.
Refinement for the pedestrian access route, I think, yeah.
The revisions would be reviewed by planner and accepted, if it needs to come back.
Sounds good, yeah. With that, I think, uh, I would entertain a motion for approval, unless it-
A move for approval with the, uh, proviso of the additional wordsmithing and the stated condition.
Right. And a second? Second?
Sure.
By Commissioner Rothie, oh, motion by Commissioner Muir. Um, any further discussion? In favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Will you be able to come back on that?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In case, we are going to proceed to, uh, the public hearing for assigned variants. Open the public hearing at seven o'clock.
Thank you applicants for allowing us to shuffle the agenda.
Thank you.
So our, our applicants are here, uh, we've got, R.T. Vickerman was the official applicant on behalf of the American Legion Coast State. Um, their application is to place a wall-mounted electronic message center. The existing conditions and proposed conditions, so the reason for the variants is because our ordinance does not allow the electronic signs on the buildings, they're only allowed as-
Freestanding.
Freestanding, mm-hmm.
So what they're proposing to do is remove both sides, both sides of the yellow trans- those signs.
Inclusive, uh, changeable signs?
The changeable signs, so they propose to take those down and replace it with one electronic message center, to be on the west side facing the- The subject sites in the MV one district and our ordinance allows this, on, in all non-residential districts, and the only, the only reason it's a false sign is an electronic. So this I pulled from the Lake of Minnesota City, but the leave is probably the first variance process for, um, when considering a variant, a city exercises a quasi-judicial authority, in that the city acts like a judge in evaluating the facts against the legal system. So it's limited to applying the legality standards of practical difficulties presented by the applicant. The applicant meets the standards and the city may grant this test when the city writes the ruling ordinance for exercising a legislative. So in our ordinance, per se statute, there's three practical difficulties that we need to prove, our ordinance goes above and beyond, so we've got to be consistent with our comp plan and our zoning, and adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the general population. Owner has to propose to use the property in a reasonable manner, so that if the owner not be due to circumstances, and, and considerations, the owner cannot constitute the practice. So here's where I would invite the applicant to come up and speak on your application. I did take from your wording that you used to answer these questions, but if you'd like to come up and bring, I do so, or I can continue on. I do so, or I can continue on.
First of all, thank you, I appreciate, uh, putting this on your agenda for this evening. So I guess the first thing we're looking at and the reason we're asking for a variant is that the property between our building and East Seventh City property right away, it doesn't belong to us. Property that does belong to us, however, is either the building or it's a parking lot. For us to put a freestanding sign, but then we'd have to trench fair amount of cost, electric, electricity to that location. The other issue is the snow plowing in the wintertime. No matter where we put it in that parking lot, it's gonna be in the way. Likely to take a lot of abuse. So that's why we're asking for the variants to mount one sign on the west wall, the same location as the west sign is presently. And I guess at this point I'll, we'll field any questions.
I just wanna add on to that. I'm, I'm Dan Bronk, I'm the commander of North St. Paul American Legion. You know, we've been in the community for since nineteen nineteen, over a hundred and two years. We have six hundred active members with our polls. Um, on a given year, last fifteen years, we gave over thirty-two thousand dollars to the North St. Paul Food Show and other activities in the school. Having this digital sign is gonna help us advertise more community events. What's going on our blood drives? Everything that we do there, we give, money that we generate goes back into our community. You know, this is a safety factor in how I look at it. It's not advertising, I got employees going up ladders to put signs on marquee boards. There's no sidewalk there, it's grass, it will slide out. I'm looking at what do I can do to ensure the safety of my veterans, you know? Average age in our polls is sixty-two, up to ninety something years old. Given year, we serve about fourteen, fifteen thousand people that come through our doors. Plus we do celebration of lives, this would be advertising, a lot of different events going on. Our main ones are blood drives, our food, our auxiliary events and stuff, so. Again, that's why we're really asking for the variants, it's not to advertise for food to come here. It's what we're doing in the community. We're hosting American Legion baseball team there, we're holding the players having their PTO meeting there. School board comes down once a week, or once a month every Monday. Parents wanna come down and see what's going on, that's what we're using the signs for. But it's the safety of having people go up and change letters daily of activities that's going on in the community, so. Again, if you have any questions, ask us, you know? And I can show, I have a report to show, here, I can get a copy of this.
I can add to that signage issues also is that in the wintertime, it's, well, well, it's not seasonal. The letters that we can put in the slots that are in the current sign either will blow out in the summer when it's windy or in the wintertime, you can't get letters in those slots because they're filled with ice. There's no way in the world you're gonna have somebody come out there and try to cut the ice out of a little slot trying to get letters and numbers in.
I'm passing around.
So we don't have the flexibility we would like to have and this would allow us a lot of flexibility because we.
What I'm passing around is this, uh, it's where we donate a lot of our money to the community. You'll see a lot of North St. Paul stuff, food shelves, fifteen thousand dollars over the last, last couple of years here. Um, St. Paul, North St. Paul K nine, uh, we, you know, so the advertisement and the board helps us put a lot of money back into our community. So we're just trying to make the public aware of what's going on. We're available to host events and, again, this is all about safety too, is how do I prevent injuries? Yes, sir.
I'm just wondering, uh, is there a reason why you're preferring to have it aimed towards your parking lot as opposed to replacing the sign that's on the street side? Or possibly even putting one, just replacing the entire yellow sign with one on both corners of the. You can answer that. We, we initially were looking at doing both. The sign facing the west and the sign facing the north. However, because of budgetary issues, at this moment, we can only accommodate the one in the west. So it's one or the other and we chose the west.
If you'd like to approve both, we would take it for future.
Yes.
Yeah, if, if you're willing to approve both, we will definitely do our very best to be able to fund one that faces the street. Cause that would be the ultimate that we would like to be able to do. Because it, it does limit the signage if it's only on one side or the other. Depending on which direction you're going on Seventh. Coming off the century going, you know, west or coming towards century going east, yeah. There are limitations by only having one sign.
Right, and that's, that was.
At the moment, that's the funding issue, yeah.
Now that piece of paper you see, you might see on the bottom right hand corner where it's five star rating. That is by the state of Minnesota of what we are terrible donations back to our community. So we have exceeded the standard of thirty, thirty percent. Or sixty-two percent of our money is going back into our community and that's how we achieve our five star ratings. And if you prefer us to put it on the, the north side, we would definitely put the board on the north side going forward. We're not opposed to that at all either.
I think that the west side makes the most sense because it faces oncoming traffic.
Well, it gives them a lot longer to look at the board as they're coming up the road.
Driving past and looking to your right.
Yeah, we don't want them to stop and they're much more of a distraction if they're driving.
Yeah, if you're coming off century and you're turning toward the west, then the first thing you're gonna look at is for traffic oncoming and you're not gonna be looking at our region building facing the north.
Although the flag on the side looks really nice.
That's probably what, the only thing they'll look at is the, uh, it's pretty true. The sign on the building, but they'll probably miss the.
Driving by.
Sign itself, so.
I'm assuming it would meet, we've got other, remind me, we have language in the sign ordinance about the electronic message boards, that there's a certain number of lumens per square footage, it would meet all those requirements?
Yes, yes, we're, we're.
Only it wouldn't be freestanding.
Right, that's the only.
It would have to be.
But as far as all the other regulations within that ordinance, we will meet those.
Yeah, and that was already sent to the vendor. What the city ordinance required, so they could develop that marquee board to the standards.
That development is probably the initial bid that we got from our contractor. Compliment.
No other questions for the applicant after we close the public hearing?
I mean, there is no other public wanting to speak, would agree. Are we waiting? We're waiting for potential Zoom attenders to participate if they have something to. Comments in that case, we'll close the public hearing at seven twelve.
Um, for full disclosure, as it's my significant other that often changes that sign, um, there is a slight conflict of interest with me, um, just to make you guys aware of.
Thanks for bringing that up. Respectfully, thanks.
No, it's very.
Truly appreciate it.
He'll appreciate it too if we're gonna do that.
Just say nothing of the employees that work for me.
I heard about that ladder's tall.
Okay, so now is the time for you to discuss amongst yourselves. And what staff needs is your assistant deciding how to answer the questions on this form. So based on your decision of either approval or denial, I will need to create a resolution that find, that states of finding the facts, the rationale for either approval or denial.
Can you, can you clarify, Randy, the, the conditions that should be met for the variants, the statutory conditions that are mentioned? It was in the report someplace, I didn't.
Well, that's what's on, on the sheet.
That's what's on here?
Yep, so everything in bold. And this, um, this came from a, a public comment that was submitted via email from Elaine, our former chair. You're looking for the staff report where I talked about?
Randy, I'm just curious, for the future, uh, if they were to come back to us and ask for, uh, an additional sign on the Seventh Street side, uh, would that be against the sign ordinance completely? Or would that also be qualified, could that be qualified under a variant?
An additional, the type of sign?
Cause I'm, frankly, I'm kind of of a mind to propose that we allow them to have it and give them a future conditional use for that other side. So, of additional variants for that other side, so we just take her all at once. At least, I'd like to put that out for suggestion, uh, for, for discussion. Uh, but I'm just wondering, you know, if I do that, you know, is there something in the sign ordinance that says that not only would require a variant, but it just wouldn't be allowed because of the amount of signage on the building or something to that effect?
I don't know the answer to that question. Um, if there is a limitation, I bet there might be on quantity or square footage of.
Right.
How much wall signage you can have, I don't have that at the top of my head.
Okay.
Um, the question that comes to mind though is the application was for just the one. And I don't know if we can provide additional variances without having gone through the process.
Good point.
Legally, I, I'd have to ask our attorney on that, if it's something that you wanted to try to accommodate? And counsel would ultimately approve it? We could see if it's, if it's not legal, then we would not be able to move it forward to counsel as to.
The donation is to keep it to what was initially applied for and then a, a future planning commission can take up when you guys do decide to slap another sign on there.
I guess that's the cleanest way to do it.
Hand up future commissions into a decision that's already been made.
Um, can you clarify your recommendation about finding the fact that's on page four here? What, what is your, what is the intent there for staff, staff recommends motion to. Question with approval or deny? Can you clarify what that means?
Yeah, my recommendation is, I'm not giving a recommendation.
Okay.
I, I need, I need. I need you to give me the, the yay or the nay.
That's legitimate, okay.
We just talk one by one?
Well, um, I have, I have one thing that's kind of lingering in that, that. The description of, um, whether or not this could be placed elsewhere on the site. I think a sign could be placed elsewhere on the site. Um, I think there are cost implications and other complexities to make that happen. Um, but that has to do with how the site was developed in the first place. Um, could you, for instance, put a sign where there's, uh, not parking striping? Or where there's, where there's, uh, no parking striping? Um, and yeah, you could probably figure out a way to put a sign there. Um, a variant is a pretty specific thing. Um, generally, a variant would not get approved just because it costs money. Costs you more money to do it that way, or it's more complicated to do it that way. Um, and so I think it's difficult to, it's difficult to say, yes, we should grant the variants. However, I, I do like the idea of, um, potentially changing the, actually doing a, a text amendment to the ordinance to allow the wall-mounted sign. Um, as opposed to being freestanding only. I'm not sure why we did it as freestanding only when we set an ordinance in the first place. Randy, do you recall, were you involved in that?
I was involved and I.
Do you remember?
I don't, I don't remember, um.
It's possible that we just didn't think about it, about changing it. It was something that was overlooked as a specific.
Yeah, I thought it was something that didn't occur.
I didn't, I didn't, I just don't think we talked about it specifically.
No, I don't remember it coming up, so.
Probably.
I think we did talk about electronic signs several times.
Quite a lot, yeah.
And what I do, I do remember talking about. The Holiday Station comes to mind for some reason.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the biggest issues that we talked about and analyzed is.
The sign.
This is outside of the discussion of this variant, but it, it's pertinent. Cause, uh, Commissioner Brennan brought it up. Um, we did talk very much about the brightness of the sign and the size of the sign and the frequency of change.
Right, yeah.
Those were all issues because you don't want something that's, you know, blasting and strobe lighting and stuff like that. I think, uh, there, I have, I have comments to say about that. About the Casey Lake sign, that's a whole separate thing.
Oh, yeah.
Can I do for a second regarding the cost? Um, so when you talk about the cost, you know, yes, a variant is that, but in, in order for us to do the sign in the parking lot, yes, we would have to tunnel electric. But we also have to now consider redesigning our parking lot, re-striping it all and how that full traffic moves from all the cars, there's not one empty spot that's available right now. Everything is lined up, we share with the museum next door to us, so they use the parking lot, so. Yes, you, it might be easy to say, yep, just put a freestanding sign in the middle of parking lot, but then you gotta change the whole striping, redo all, that's a lot more cost onto that. And then working with museum on how we make that full track where they're using that, or, and then their building, how their striping knows in ours. So we have a good full track without causing more accidents, vehicles backing out, maybe possibly hitting that signage, trying to get in now and now, all our parking's at a die angle, nothing's straight. But we would really have to look at that and then with the easing up the sidewalk that's right in front of where the parking is, how far we have to be off that city sidewalk right there too. There's a lot of factors and where we would place that.
And like I mentioned, it's difficult enough now for our contractor to plow snow just the way it is. And if we put something in the middle of that parking lot and eliminate a couple, three parking spots, it's just gonna be more difficult. And there are times where our overflow parking goes to the bank when it's after hours with, be on an agreement we have with Old National, only because we'll have events that our parking lot will not be able to accommodate. Patrick, I do agree with you, I think that it is something in the sign ordinance that we need to amend.
My, my suggestion is that I, I think it's, I think it's primarily an economic consideration. I, there's a practical consideration too with regard to the snow plowing and that kind of a thing that you're talking about. There are ways that the site could be modified to create a, a. That's not to say that I don't, that I specifically don't wanna see. It's not to say I am discouraging putting it on the building, except for the fact our ordinance currently says you can't put it on the building. And it should be freestanding. The, the thing about a variant is the economic hardship is not justification for a variant.
Understand.
And so my, my leaning would be to not approve the variants, but to initiate the text amendment, change sign ordinance. In other words, change the ordinance to allow a wall-mounted.
Wall-mounted sign.
EMC, M, MS, M, what, remember what the acronym is? EMC, Electronic Message Center.
Legally, I think that gives us a much firmer leg to stand on for the future because if we do allow it from the standpoint of an economic hardship, then that gives somebody else.
You've just set a precedent that I think is statutorily not really legitimate.
Right.
Um, the question I guess I have then is if, if we would perceive like I'm suggesting, which is based upon several recommendations and, and, um, if we change the sign ordinance to allow the wall-mounted message board, are we setting, setting up for something else that we don't want in the future? And I, I have really, honestly, I've thought through this for several days, I've been thinking about. I've been thinking about which this. And is that going to set a precedent that says, okay, now our ordinance is allowing things that we don't want to allow? But I, personally, I couldn't come up with anything. I don't know if anybody else has any reason that, that a wall mounted message board would be bad for some circumstance. But I think we, we set up the electronic sign ordinance like, like we were talking about. We really talked through that to make sure it wasn't these flashy strobe lighty things going on in places where we don't want them. And I think in this case, it doesn't matter if it's on a post or on a building. You're, essentially, it's, the message is going to get there one way or another. I mean, you're going to accomplish what you're trying to do. But I think, I think we need to decline, we need to deny the variance and change the ordinance. So that you can do what you want to do.
So based off of that, now, would, if you wanted to change, say this is not a variance, could we get a refund since we don't, this is not a variance issue, as you're stating?
No.
Or we just lost, a nonprofit just lost seven hundred and fifty dollars? Because you have, you want to go back and rewrite the law now to make it correct? So if you're saying that this is not, this is not a variance issue, you're thinking it's different how you worded the regulation the first time, didn't word it correctly? I'm just asking, yes, please.
It's a different application process. I think that they're offering a solution.
No, I understand that.
And there is a process and an application fee for a text amendment. So I don't believe they're asking you to go through that as well. But unfortunately, there would not be a refund for the variance.
You don't have to pay another fee, is the point.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a question. Is there a reasonable timeframe you have in mind to address this ordinance change?
Randy, can you respond to that?
I can. It is complicated because the sign ordinance that we amended, or we did a complete rewrite of that and it took us almost a year. I think reasonably, I don't know that it's likely that we could get it on the next agenda and approved as the next agenda. But I would suggest that it's possible and reasonable to think that this could have action early, early in the year.
As opposed to, I guess, before we go down this road, what if we go through all these little findings of facts and we agree and we recommend approval tonight? Is that a more expeditious way to find an agreeable solution with this sign? Does this, if we recommend approval on this, would this go to the next city council?
Um, no.
What?
The process for, that is laid out for this and future variances, as I see it, is my opinion of variances is that the ordinance is written in a way that this is the policy direction of the city.
Sure.
And if the applicant can't meet it, there, there, there has to be a really unique situation that warrants the hardship or the hardship that warrants the variance. So it's, it's going to be almost never, in my opinion, that a variance is going to be applied in one. So the two, the two meeting process is required from my mind because I don't get to make the decision. It's based on all of this discussion and the findings of facts from your opinion. So we need to like hash that out and then the resolution that would come forward to you at the next meeting and then so that's the variance process. If we're going to do the ordinance amendment, I believe we do have to have a, have to verify it again. It's been a while. We may need a public hearing, zoning, which would be in front of the planning commission. And then it would go to the city council for proof. So depending on how quickly we can decide on what the rules would be, it could be done faster potentially, but I-
I remember back to when, I remember when Soren gave us some training. And I think he used some language like variances are the living laboratory of the zoning code, right? Where if you see, if there's a pattern of variances that we elect to approve, well then, at some point, you decide this is the new pattern. Or this is, this should be, we should rewrite the ordinances.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, are we ready to do that? If this is the first one that's come up, are we ready to just say, for whatever reason, a year and a half ago, we said, no, we only want EMCs on freestanding signs? Ready to?
If I had to wager to guess what happened when we did the zoning ordinance, I, I know that we started with, what is our current ordinance? And we tried to scale it back as much as possible. I don't remember exactly what the electronic message signage requirements were. But if they were working, they probably were right forward. So it wasn't something that it was, was wrong with the sign ordinance that we needed to fix, actually.
I know what I was thinking about. I was thinking primarily about freestanding signs like UC along Thirty Sixth or what a business might put out like the banks do. You know, they, because the banks would usually freestanding, that type of thing. It just didn't occur to me to think about a changeable message sign on the side of a building.
Yeah, I don't, I can't think of any where.
I, I don't recall having the discussion about it.
I don't, I don't recall either. And I can't think of any
Yeah.
that would have triggered the conversation.
Yeah. And I think that's part of the, to respond to, kind of, um, part of the challenge of creating the zoning ordinance in the first place is it's, it's difficult to envision what the variance is going to be.
Yep.
You know, and until, like, like you said, it's a little bit of a laboratory. You see the conditions occur and you kind of go, oh, yeah, okay, that makes sense. We really should go that direction. There's some rationale for it. And then, then it's just a matter of saying, if we make a change, are we creating a change in a manner that now opens up Pandora's box? And now you're going to get bad stuff happening that we really don't want.
Intended consequences.
So that's, that's the, and just like the, we had a public comment a couple of meetings ago about put things in the ordinance that you want to, that you will enforce. Otherwise, don't put them in there. You aren't going to enforce them, why are they there? Long and short of it is, I think, I think the challenge here is justifying the variance, I think, is that I'm having trouble with. I don't know that we can, even though I appreciate the rationale and I appreciate the desire to, to make the change.
I'm going to, my name's Randy Best, I'm the gambling manager, so I'll be paying for the sign. What if we were to put it in the parking lot? What is your setback from the, from the easement line, which is at the back of the sidewalk, which would put that sign way into the parking lot?
It's a ten foot setback from the property line.
Yeah.
So now we're in the middle of the travel lane. So
Well, you're, you're your property line is at the head of the parking, right?
No, our property line is behind the sidewalk, behind the city sidewalk.
Behind the sidewalk, yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So you'd be, you'd be into a parking stall, is what you'd be into.
We'd be really close to a parking lane.
And then we got a car parked near your side of it.
Parking stalls are eighteen, well, I think they're at an angle, right?
Yeah.
And they're probably eighteen feet in. So you, you start to impact. I, I mean, I absolutely understand your rationale.
And then you got a car parked near your side of it, you, why do you have a sign? Because you can't see it.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? The height is, I've got a freestanding sign, can it only be so high?
I don't disagree with the, with the, the logic of making the change. I, I just think that from a statutory legality standpoint, I think it's a stretch to get there.
Colorize the sign can't be more than eight feet high. I have to read through all your city ordinance, so then we'll have a line of sight, people kind, you know, just eight feet is not high enough for a car or a truck to pull off the parking lot.
I'd have to, I'd have to look it up.
So, yeah, we put that into our parking lot, now we have a line of sight issue and we want to not have accidents, you know? We can, we can go a lot of different ways on a, a variance, you know? Now we're pushing that ten feet into a pathway.
Very various, tell you, get the sign, the ordinance changed. We can get this up before-
Yes, so we can, so we can lock in a good price goal with the vendor as it keeps going up. Now, three signs are about fifteen thousand dollars per one, and that's why we can only afford to do one.
Question for you on the sign. And I, I understand you might not know this off the top of your head, not trying to put you on the spot. Is there a reason, or, or, or would they, is it just setback? That would prevent them from just putting the sign where they're talking about and having it one and two away from the building? On a post?
I'm not sure where that would be located.
No, right where they're at. If, if you just moved it away from the building, one-
Well, the setback is ten feet from the property line. So I don't know if there's-
But right in front of the building.
So is that-
He would have-
I'd have to see a site plan if it complies with the ten foot, then.
Oh, all right, yeah.
If where the sign is right now, we're propulsion and we go ten feet in, now we're into the turn lane coming into the parking lot. Because our, that turn lane is right, right at the beginning of the entrance.
I'll just remind the public or the planning commission, the public hearing part has been closed.
Sorry. All right, sorry.
So if we can just continue the discussion amongst the commissioners?
Sorry.
Either way, it doesn't sound like a quick, go ahead, sorry, Jason.
No, no, I apologize. So, and again, I, I'm sit balling here. Hypothetically, if they wanted to put the sign one and two away from the building, they could request a variance or a setback variance and put it right where they're intending.
Potentially, but I think we would be encountering the same situation.
It's the same thing, but proving hardship.
Right.
Look, I think you're on to something. I, I just can't, I'm thinking of when this came up and I can't think of any other reason besides it was just a holdover from the old sign ordinance of why we decided it couldn't, or it just is a freestanding bit, is what I'm saying. So, and I'm, based on your one inch rule, Jason, or taking a parking stall, but then keeping some visibility, it's all the same effect of, you know, is the best placement of this sign just right where the existing sign is? What's the least impactful way we can accommodate such a thing? Whether it's changing the ordinance or approving the variance?
Yeah, if I could just add to your comment regarding previous considerations of the sign ordinance, I could try to look back at minutes, see if we discussed it. I think that we probably didn't. I would also add, signs, electronic signs have come a long way. So I know that I've looked at Casey Lake sign, too, and have thought newer models are a little bit easier to see, are a little bit easier to look at. So that could be another conversation that we consider if we are to go the zoning update route.
How do you guys feel about us opting or allowing for this variance on the standpoint of safety? That because of the other locations for the sign would, could create a hazard for motorists who are trying to enter or leave the facility? And then we go ahead and we work on changing the ordinance? Because I think safety concerns would definitely overrule.
Talking about safety of, I, I'm not underst-
Safety of the patrons, people who are trying to enter and exit the parking lot.
Oh, as compared with if you put a freestanding sign in?
Right, yeah.
Or not, okay. I understand what you're saying. What I'm, what I'm having trouble with is justification for the we've talked it out. If it's, I'm thinking about
Well, I think we need to get a sense of who's in favor of approval versus denial.
Yeah, so the, we don't have a motion on the floor for approval or denial, for approval, I should say. Someone is in a position to make such a motion, I think that's, that's the next step. And then we need to vote on it.
Before we do that, would we have to go through these findings?
I think if we're going to make a motion of approval, we need to justify it. If we're going to make a motion of denial, we need to at least say exactly what it is that is deficient about the application that we're basing the denial on.
Either way, there needs to be justification for it. A rationale.
Yep.
Do we have a motion one way or another?
I'd really like to see or know what the requirements for the freestanding sign are. Are you able to pull those up?
Any monument pylon?
One freestanding sign per street frontage. Height of a monument cannot be eight feet above the existing grade, or a pylon cannot exceed twenty-five feet. Electronic message center sign shall not exceed eight feet above existing grade. So that tells me that if it's a electric sign, it's going to be a monument. I feel like we did talk about that one, yeah.
That doesn't, that doesn't-
Yeah, we did.
But you're still going to be below feet if I look at the pictures, that building.
Mm-hmm.
I look at the number of blocks, you're still going to be below the eight feet realm of the way that building is laid out.
Probably, yeah.
Not totally.
If you look at the building, where that-
Yeah, yeah, it's-
We're talking about putting a monument sign outside, a freestanding sign.
Well, no, we're talking about, you're, you're men, you're talking about the sign on the building.
Exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was talking about freestanding signs.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Right, we're doing a comparison.
So you and I are not talking about the same thing?
Right.
You're talking about clearance, I think.
I was talking just about clearance to the ground is what I was looking at.
Yep, I was talking about distance up from the ground.
Up from the ground.
To the bottom of the sign, right? Or to the top of the sign.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're saying that a, we're saying that a freestanding sign could not, the top of the freestanding sign could not be more than eight feet off the ground, right?
Correct, yep.
So, and that's what I'm saying is that because of them putting a freestanding sign in the parking lot, that that's going to be lower down than some vehicles are going to be, which is going to make it a, a vision hazard.
So, does that work with other monuments, signs that following the rest?
That's on double checking is to see what, you know, part of it, I, I think part of it is that we, at least, I know I was thinking about something in front of a building in a right of way area, not, not a right of way area, but you know, like a property in front of a building or beside the building, as opposed to something being in the middle of a parking lot.
It, it's really difficult to determine the safety of a sign that we don't know where it's located and what the traffic circulation and other features of the site are. Typically, you'd have a monument sign positioned in a landscape area
Right.
far away
Exactly.
from your travel, travel lane. And I don't know that I would feel comfortable- And I don't know that I would feel comfortable approving a sign in the middle of a parking lot.
No, that's what I'm saying is, you know, I, you know. If we ask, if we stand by the, the regulations right now as they exist.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like we'd be telling them that they have to put a sign in the parking lot.
But we're not. We're not telling them they have to install a sign anywhere. That's the difference.
The reason I'm struggling with it is because I don't, not that I want to deny.
Yeah.
Variance. It's that I think the variance is not the right.
So, I, I agree.
That's, that's the thing. I, it's not that I want to deny them the, the ability to make the change. Just that I think we need to do it the right way and it feels like a variance is not the right. Because I, I don't think that we can prove a justification for it.
Yeah, see, what, what I'm saying is that if we don't grant them the variance, if they want the sign, we're telling them they have to put the sign in their parking lot.
We're not telling them they have to put a sign.
No, if they want the sign.
That's the deep, that's the default.
The default is to continue to keep the sign, yeah.
I, I understood. Right, it, that's understood, that if, if you want to put a sign on the property that's compliant, there would be some change
Yeah.
that would be required in the parking lot. Because the rest of the site is paved.
Right.
Like I said earlier, I agree with you that the, the sign ordinance needs to be changed.
And I, and I'm not sure that the sign ordinance would change otherwise, except for the fact that I think I, I'd like to be able to accommodate.
Yeah.
In a, in a way that legally we do it.
Well, and we may have a few other situations in the future where this comes up. Now, I can think of, for example, maybe the community center. You know, maybe, there may well put an electronic sign there at some point in the future.
Mm-hmm.
And it would make more sense to be able to put it on the building than, you know, and, and of course, we have the other uh, Veterans Association on the other end of town. They're going to be in the same kind of situation. And I won't be at all surprised if you folks get your electronic sign, that they start thinking about putting one down there, they're gonna be the exact same spot. So. I think it does, I think that gives us a reason to look at the sign ordinance, it's just gonna take a little bit more time going that route.
Want to put a motion on the table? I don't know what I'm supposed to.
Got a motion, you're welcome.
Please do that. Um, it's nice to ask then first.
Yeah.
Rule with an iron fist.
No. I have no intention of doing that.
If there is not one forthcoming, I think it's okay if you make one?
Like, that's why I was letting somebody else do it.
Probably rules.
One or another.
Uh, split decider of a motion. Chair can make a motion.
Yeah.
Correct.
I don't know that we're under Roberts rule.
Well.
It's changed, recently updated.
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a loosely run Roberts rule.
We're talking about legal and stuff, I'm just wanna.
Yeah, but you're right.
Yeah, chair is the deciding force.
Yeah, 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 that's right. I need somebody speak up one way or another.
The only way I would, I would be comfortable, I guess, denying right now is if we immediately move to make the adjustment to the signing ordinance. And I guess I'm, are we all kind of on the same page with that?
Yeah, uh, in fact, I was about to ask as to whether everybody was, felt like we need to make an adjustment to the sign ordinance so that we are working in the same direction. I know, I, I feel like that's the situation.
Sure.
Does anybody else wanna give their thoughts one way or the other?
Sounds right. Okay.
Well, I would make the motion then to deny the requested variance. And along the, and insert a condition of we, the planning commission, modify the sign ordinance to include EMCs, uh, to include wall mounted EMCs as allowable.
I think you should.
We should separate that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah, I think we should separate it.
Consider the ending.
Okay, no, okay.
I will second that.
Right, what we, motion by Brenna, by Meawick.
And the rationale, I think you explained it earlier, and that would be again.
Um, having to do with economic hardship as a, I think you even had it on your computer for a little bit. The statute, the, the statute about.
It's not a rationale. Okay.
Not being a rationale for a variance.
Okay, so, I think that the, the motion is deny. We've got economic hardship is not the rationale for, for variance. Is what we would put in the resolution that you would.
Recommendation to the council.
Yep.
Now, can we make a motion?
That being the case, we should vote.
Yep, you don't, I don't think you need to make a motion on that.
Yeah, but so.
So, that, that can.
So, formally, we have to vote aye to deny.
Okay.
All, all in favor to deny?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Then, um, while it's not technically on our agenda, put something together with regard to.
If staff notes it, that'll be on a forthcoming agenda.
Okay.
To talk about the sign ordinance.
Put that, that's something that, um, not on the agenda for tonight, but it seems to me that's going to be a pretty straightforward and pretty simple ordinance change.
I think so. Uh, there may be some resources that I'll send out regarding electronic signs. Chris and I just saw a pretty useful webinar that made.
Okay.
Um, provide some illumination on the topic. And I just wanna make sure that if we're going into an ordinance amendment, that we consider how it may impact other properties.
Uh, it seems to me it's gonna.
Going back to our earlier discussion on it, was the timeline similar? It sounds like we can bring this up at the next planning commission. Assuming that goes through with the same level of discussion.
I can't guarantee how quickly a sign ordinance is gonna go, but we will have a draft for you to review at the next meeting.
Can we, um, can we initiate it such that there's a public?
I don't think that's legally okay.
It's a time notification thing.
Makes me wonder if, timing wise for publication, yes, but is it acceptable to have a
Yeah.
ordinance come to you that you haven't reviewed yet? Yes, we could do it that way. I mean, typically done it that way.
Well, that, that we haven't reviewed, well, we, we can review it.
We, sorry.
I mean, separate from the meeting, we can, we can see it. You can distribute information to us so that we're seeing it in advance.
Right. The concern I have is that I don't really, aside from the fact that there's this one property that we want to allow to have an electronic sign, I don't know what other parameters need to be thought of. The ordinance to be amended.
Yeah, I think it would be difficult for us to be able to, I hate to say this, but I think it would be difficult for us to approve an ordinance that has to go in front of the public without us having something to put in front of the public first.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, needs to get published.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I think we need at least one meeting to talk about it, so in November, so, yeah, I think, I think realistically, it needs to be January.
So, we'll expedite to the greatest degree possible.
And I think that's reasonable. We'll have a draft at the December meeting for review. Any changes that may need to be made from that draft would be, you know, given. Wouldn't have to be held up based on that as well. So, I'm gonna need a quorum at the next meeting.
You there?
For December.
Where are you gonna be in January?
I'm a lame duck. I'm, my term is up and, ever, I just have my third kid, so I'm bowing out. I got, my Thursdays are busy, just little kids' activities, sorry, not pertinent.
Give me a call about the fee tomorrow. Give me a call about the fee tomorrow.
See?
The fee, yeah.
Sure, I can definitely give you a call.
You have what you need?
I think we have what we need.
Yep, yep, we're ready to move on to the next item.
So, now we're just talking.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Our evening.
Um, I think we're to the last item on the agenda, aside from reports and such.
The CIP.
Improvement plan.
Well, I, I'd like feedback from the commission as to how you want this to be presented in future years. I think in previous years, we've had just a spreadsheet that you could barely read, because it was so small.
It was so small, yeah.
Um, and then it was mostly focused, the presentation was mostly focused on the transportation corridors that were gonna be improved. Um, so for this round, I tried to explain, since I had a, a part in, in developing the CIP, I wanted you to know what I put into the ordinance as well as what other folks put into the ordinance, related to, um, parks and everything that planning commission may have a, you know, consideration for. So, I took a look at the comp plan, the park improvement plan, and then redevelopment master plan. I did not, I did not look at the street map, because I'm assuming that Morgan and his team are aware of what streets require the greatest attention, and that they're doing their, their best to prioritize those. Um, so anyway, so the, the references and the page numbers were related to the plan documents that I was looking at, and not the CIP page numbers, so I apologize for that not being clear. Um, but they, the ID was how you would identify it in the park CIP, because it's hard up a park, but the, the CIP. They occur in different places depending on where it's reported. Sometimes it's, here's all the projects related to a certain kind of infrastructure, or here's all the projects that are coming out of a certain spot. So, they all have an ID and they appear different places. Do you have any questions about any of these projects, or why they were selected, or how much is proposed for them, or anything at all? So, take this question.
What is, what, as you think about each one of these projects, what is the biggest piece that you are looking for from us? I'm these, I mean, what is it that you truly are looking for from us as a relation?
Well, really, what I need is just statute, or by statute, for the planning commission to say, yes, we agree. So, the capital improvement plan is consistent with our comprehensive plan. So, it's a statutory requirement that this come to you. Unless the city council is able to waive it for some reason. I haven't had the experience of doing that yet. Um, I think that reason being that it has no bearing on the comp plan, which any infrastructure project probably does.
Does.
So, I don't know how that could ever come into effect, that waiver. But know that I did review the comp plan and the other plans that.
These go into.
Yep, sorry?
That these.
I, yep, these are.
Yes.
Pulled from there directly. And so, that, have comfort knowing that even if the timing is not in alignment necessarily with what those plans say, the intent to continue to move forward to implement those documents is continuing through our capital improvement plan.
I didn't see anything that I would question. Was a matter of prioritizing. So. As far as questioning the compliance with the plans that are in place.
Yeah.
Didn't see anything that was a alert in that regard.
I think mostly what I'm looking for is just your blessing on, on the CIP, that you're ready to.
Okay, do we need to actually do a vote on that?
I, I think I do need a motion.
And a motion? A motion and a vote.
Um, but there's no resolution necessary unless I put one in here.
You need a motion for us to move ahead with this?
Say, um, that you agree that.
I agree.
CIP is in compliance or consistent with the, the comp plan, and we recommend approval of it.
Perfect. What she just said is exactly what I would say.
You just, that's your motion.
Yes, sir.
There you go. So, that's a motion from Commissioner Rothie. Do we have a second?
Second it?
Second, from Commissioner Brenna. Any further discussion? Nothing, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. But, sending to the city council the approval of, of. It's on compliance with the comprehensive park improvement plan and the redevelopment master plan. I did look at some of those.
Hey.
Okay. Last item on our agenda.
Thank you for pulling ahead those other items.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, do we need to have any further discussion about making the adjustment?
I think I know the direction generally.
Okay.
Um, but I just didn't want to.
Yeah.
Speaking of ordinance, are we about to jump into reports?
We're about to jump into reports. What do you have for staff report?
Well, I've been pretty busy lately, and I haven't had a lot of time to do any of the zoning ordinance work that we've been doing. Um, there is a couple of things that we will possibly, I mean, the side ordinance will come at the next meeting. Another possibility, I'm not sure how quickly this one is necessary. There is something called a, I think it's called an assisted living arrangement. I think that's the right terminology, where the state regulates it in such a way that is in inconsistent with how the city regulates it. So, we're, we're saying that you can't do it at all, whereas the state says you can. So, I had four, drop me an, an update. So, I might bring that forward.
Okay.
Which opens up another can of worms for me. I, I feel like, and I haven't decided necessarily, is that the zoning ordinance process, how I initially thought it was going to lay out or play out was that we would just kind of work through it and rewrite it in, in whole, like we did with the sign ordinance. But this is such a monster that I don't know if it's going to, it might be better to take it in pieces. And then when we are satisfied with how the pieces have turned out, then do like the giant reorganization shuffle later on. So, you wanna think about that? I don't know if that made a whole lot of sense, but.
Oh, it did not.
Okay, let me try again, um.
Pieces are we talking about?
Well. Doing a complete rewrite is complicated because you have parts of the ordinance that talk to other parts of the ordinance.
Yes.
So, instead of figuring out a little bit here and then kind of doing it chapter by chapter, tackling it instead potentially topic by topic, like this item that we're gonna talk about possibly the next year, this living thing. Um, where you pinpoint, okay, it's, it's a definition item here that we need to fix. Now, we're gonna keep the use, we're gonna fix the definition, we're gonna fix the table. Done, that one's done.
That's a subject then that has been addressed.
Yes.
Yes.
As opposed to broader topics as like the residential stuff, will be talked about last time, which was a valuable discussion. And we got someplace, and maybe we can continue with the ordinance, but, so I really need to work through it, and I just haven't had time to give it the thought that it is.
Yeah, the challenge there is figuring out the best process to get.
And if we had a consultant doing it for. And if we had a consultant doing it for us, we would just send them and they would just do the whole thing at once.
Yeah.
Um, which was effective for the sign ordinance, when you had a consultant.
Yeah.
But now you've got staff that has a lot of priorities that are changing.
Pushing and pulling.
Yeah, that's great, so that was my update on, on the sign stuff and the ordinance. Oh, I do have one other thing, there has been some considerations in city hall about potentially reducing the number of commissioners from seven to five for all of our commissions, and so I wanted to float that past this body and see the reaction is. Also know that we have two applicants, not including, which would bring us to our full seven.
For a month.
Well, no, that's including. Cause we're.
If one of the applicants would take.
Cause we're five right now.
She's gonna take your spot.
Yeah, but we're five now, if you added two and lost one, then we'd be six.
We're still at seven, cause we're missing somebody tonight, we're missing Andrew.
Oh, we're missing Andrew, that's true.
We are.
Yeah.
So, that's good news, I guess, in some ways.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the rationale is to putting it from seven to five is that it would be consistent with city council, but I, I don't know that there's benefit one way or the other.
Didn't we have a hard time getting quorum?
Well.
Remember we had like quorum?
That's my question, yeah.
But quorum is based on the number of people that are seated, that is to say, if, if we have five.
Yeah.
Then a quorum is a majority of five, even if there are seven seats, cause two seats are vacant.
Okay.
So the quorum is based on the seats that are filled. Not, not tonight's seats that are filled, but seats that are filled on the commission.
Okay.
So right now, three is a quorum.
It would be four with seven.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
I remember we had one meeting where it was kinda nip and tuck.
So I guess, in, in my opinion.
Yeah, that might have been nice to have had seven instead of five.
Yeah, right, I, I, I can go either way with it, I don't feel strongly that we need seven. Um, I think if I, the council has every right to do that and I wouldn't have any argument instead. There's some rationale to do it and it's just a matter of who, do, do they proceed with?
I'm just seeking feedback right now, so.
Yeah.
I have to admit, I prefer seven.
Yep.
Because I feel like that gives us the opportunity to have a wider variety of voices.
I do like that, yeah. I, I, after.
You know, I, I do definitely understand that it's difficult to come up with seven, but I'd rather that we.
Four, really. (laugh) But yes, the full body would be nice to have, especially when we do these, um. Okay, that was all I had.
Okay. Right, uh, commissioners' reports, Commissioner Brenna, anything?
I left the cat in the bag already, but, uh, uh, my term is up end of this year and I'm electing to, um, step off. I got two kids and I got one that was just born three weeks ago, so.
Congrats.
My, thank you, thank you, the school age kids are getting into activities and weeks are getting tossed, so I think I'm gonna have to step out and run those kids around, but I really do appreciate all the time I've, I've spent on this commission, it's been a good three years here and.
We'll put you back in five years.
Yeah, when, when things settle down, I'll be back, so.
You think five years isn't gonna settle down that fast?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, so, no, I do really appreciate getting to work on this city issues with you guys.
We used to, with our four boys, we used to call it divide and conquer.
Oh, man.
Because that's what it feels like nowadays.
It's gonna be easier when they're teenagers.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
No. It only gets better when they can drive.
Oh, boy, that's, yeah, that's, we're quite a few years away from that.
Kids don't wanna drive.
My kids have no problems driving, they're out of the house, kids are gone, they're having new ones, they're still around the house.
No, I just wanted to, um, tip my hat to Patrick, under your leadership, it's been a good commission here in Elaine previously too.
We tried.
Um, and Brandy and Chris, thank you guys for all your help, it's been, been good, so.
We appreciate your well, the commission, it's been great.
Thank you.
That's all I had for you.
Commissioner Rothie, anything for you?
Uh, nothing major for me, other than the fact that it's just been, uh, good having you as part of the committee, straight away.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nothing for me, nothing for you? I think I, uh, will only like to mention one thing, and I might get you to it, cause.
Um, I, I have, again, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. Um, on Thursday the ninth and at five PM and at Tuesday the fourteenth, at seven forty-five PM, there are two, um, open houses, one's a whistle stop tour for the one twenty, um, redevelopment, a- a- and is redevelopment the right word? Or planning stages, open houses, um, so i- if anyone has interest in attending either of those.
Where is that?
The Thursday, the ninth one is
Who's ever, is this D O T?
Y- yeah, um, i- i- it's.
At the nature center?
Yeah, no, it was a different place.
Oh.
Um, the, the, the Tuesday the fourteenth, one at seven in the morning is.
Do you have any invite, could you send it to me and I can share it with the group?
That would be great, yeah, that would be good.
Yep, and, and.
I don't know if that one's an open house, though, I think that might be.
We, if we're invited to speak, yes, but the, the tenant was.
Oh.
Yeah.
That one's, well, I don't know how broadly we can advertise it.
Find out what it's.
I wasn't invited to, to the same extent that you might have done.
Take, take a, take a look at, take a look at what the invite is, yeah.
Yeah, and then I will forward you the email on the invite for the night.
Okay, that would be great.
That was it for me, and I'm gonna look for the.
The only thing I will mention is, um, I would welcome and encourage everybody to attend the Vets Park, uh, Veterans Day commemoration. It is the eleventh, which is, happens to be a Saturday, so you should all be able to show up. Eleven o'clock, if I remember right, where is it at? Eleven o'clock to eleven thirty at the Veterans Park.
Over here?
Yeah.
What are they doing over there?
They're, they just do a commemoration on Vets Day.
Got it.
And they do some, you know, sing some songs and talk a little bit and do it, do taps and do a rifle volley and do, you know.
Yeah.
Do you get the weekly newsletters in the area? It's, I think it's posted in there.
Yes, it should be there.
I'll have to double check.
Eleven, that is Vets Day.
I do have a question, and that is, are we is there anything that we're voting on as citizens next week, I went online trying to find out
I can't.
what's on the, the voting and I, I couldn't.
Where'd I go, did you go to the Secretary of State?
I'm, I'm in, I'm in Election Day and there's nothing.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Okay.
I'm actually working on.
Okay.
Good.
I was just double checking because I could, I went on the Secretary's site and couldn't find anything, so.
No, there's nothing in there.
Nope, that's what I was thinking.
Thank you.
I did find the location, um, it's Thursday, November ninth, from five to seven, at the Washington County Wildwood Library in the Zephyr Conference Room one fifteen. Yep.
Are they discussing?
Well, it came from the county. Okay.
At one twenty, basically, from two forty-four down to.
Yep.
Thank you for your.
No. That being the case, I think we've gotten to the end of our meeting. A motion to adjourn?
Why not?
He's still reading.
Not sure that that falls under a category, if you take a look at that map. Take a double, double check that map, tell me that that still is not north of thirty-six.
I agree, but from what, what I talked to them about was, was they were.
Yeah, oh, got it, they're talking about it, yes, got it, thank you. Sorry, I'm mistaken, yeah.
Okay, so I think we have a motion from Commissioner Muick to adjourn. Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Rothie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are adjourned, yeah, eight fourteen.